And welcome everyone to the Village of North Hudson Regular Finance and Personnel Committee Meeting for Tuesday, 4 August 2020 at 6:30 PM. And I'd like to roll call to order and roll call.
Trustee Nelson.
Here.
Pike.
Here.
President Wecken.
Here.
Trustee Zeiss.
Here.
Thank you. Item two, minutes, Regular Finance and Personnel Committee Meeting of 7 July 2020. Clear motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any amendments or corrections to the meetings as presented? Hearing none, all in favor of minutes as presented, say they say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item three, claims reviews, recommendations, is there a motion?
Pastor Dan, can I move to recommend the board to approve the August 2020 non-recurring claims of $27,503?
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Any comments or questions? Pretty low one. It seems like it's a normal August type bill, yeah? Okay, so since it is spending, Kirk?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Yes. Item four, men 2020 budget discussion, possible recommendations?
Pastor Dan, I so moved and then the Village of North Hudson 2020 annual budget by transferring $1,000 from the police department vehicle assigned fund and $2,000 from the use of available funds to cover the purchase of capital for our police department.
Well, I don't know what you got going on, Tim, with your speaker, but that was pretty garbled. I don't know if you get some.
I second it. I heard it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, so.
I think my zoom is going up and down, but hopefully you guys got it. I'm calling in my phone, hoping to avoid some of that individual message, but do you want me to repeat it?
No, 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 we're good. Brian seconded. I was just trying to figure out if you were sitting someplace or just because it just, it was really kind of garbled a little bit, but I understood it. So any further discussion?
Yeah, I don't understand the, so Melissa, you're saying you're transferring 15 from, so use of available funds is more than 2,000 in the suggested motion? It's actually 17,000?
Yes, we have to, there's a $17,000 difference between what was in the budget and what the car was.
Okay, so.
We have to, technically, it all kind of comes from the use of available funds, but 15,000 of it will be from the assigned vehicle fund. It'll move over, it'll move over after, kind of behind the scenes.
Okay, so, but the motion says and 2,000 from the use of available funds. So that's the 17,000?
Yes, the 15 plus the two.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Sorry, I was just confused.
That's okay.
No, good questions. Any other questions? Hearing none, spending issue, Tim?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
And I will say yes. Okay, get that new vehicle here. Next, item five, purchase of permanent ground lighting for flagpole at Chief Jensen Park, discussion and possible recommendations?
Stan, can I move to have Scott Electric install a ground lighting at Chief Jensen's Memorial Park with cost not to exceed 1,500? Funds to be assigned from Chief Jensen Park account.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion?
Just a quick heads up, we tried a couple of the solar ones, they weren't working well, so we decided just to bite the bullet and make sure we have that flag lit up there.
That's one of the reasons I don't have like an American flag up on my pole is because them solar ones didn't work. I mean, I went through so many of them. So, no, I think this is a really good purchase and we want to make sure that the Stars and Stripes are lit. So thank you very much for doing this. And since you're first, I'll say yea or nay.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And yes. Thank you. And next item on the deal, on the agenda, is that we would be adjourned at 6:35 PM. We'll see you in about 25. Good evening, everyone. It is, it's a welcome to the Village of North Hudson Regular Board of Trustees Meeting on Tuesday, 4 August 2020 at 7:00 PM. I'd like call to order and I'll get a short invocation read. Father, we humbly come before you and ask that your spirit reach across the lands to all who are hurting and spiritually lost. Restore their hearts with hope everlasting, comfort them with your tender, loving arms. May we be sensitive to their needs, whether physical or spiritual, and be eager and willing to share your love for them, just as you have sowed your love upon us. Roll call, please.
Trustee's head.
Here.
Leaf. Matt.
Here.
Nelson.
Oh, Kirk is here. He's just.
Here.
Pike.
Here.
President Wecken.
Here.
Trustee Zeiss.
Here.
Thank you, Jessica. Item two, review and improvement is from regular board meeting of 7 July, or yeah, 7 July 2020 and a special board meeting of 14 July 2020.
So moved.
Thank you. Brian, is there a second?
Again.
Thank you, Phil. Any amendments or corrections to either one of the meeting minutes? Hearing none, all in favor is presented and signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, item three, comments from the floor, opportunity for residents or area county people to make the board aware of topics, issues, opportunities that you're on or not on today's agenda. And I believe we have an incoming, Melissa?
Yes, sorry. Kelly with St. Croix County.
Thank you.
Hello. Okay, I think I have this right. Village of North Hudson trustees, did I get it? Did I nail that?
That's pretty close.
Okay, pretty close, close enough. Well, thanks for having me tonight. I've been connected through various channels across our county as we have been in this pandemic response and wanted to just share a little bit. I, we haven't consistently done this for each village board and I feel, I don't like where, I don't like that we haven't been able to do that consistently for everybody. So I did want to just give you guys a little bit of a local update. We are bringing on a few more people to our public health department that is limited term employees. So we're able to get richer data and more data for all of the public to view. And I just wanted to highlight a few things specific for the Hudson area. And you likely will have questions. Just quickly, a little bit of background about me, I am the health officer for St. Croix County. I have been in my position, it will be two years in October. I'm a nurse by trade. I have worked in a few different counties. And I am very happy to be at St. Croix County and helping guide this response for the COVID pandemic. I'm going to really try to share my screen here with you. I, we weren't able to completely make sure this was going to work. So please let me know if you can see my first slide here. Oh, and it's got this low thing. So I will try to.
Oh, we got all night. It's beautiful out here.
Yeah, I'm outside too, but I don't, I don't have a screen either and no bug spray. So we'll get through this as quick as we can. I, I always like a conversation. So if you have questions throughout this, please just interrupt me. I sometimes talk pretty fast and get on a, get on a roll and then don't stop and pause for questions. So at any time you have questions, please signal and let me know. Oh, and it is set on this slow motion and I apologize for this. Okay.
Some of us are old. It's good for me.
Well, that's okay.
You might be able to, you might be able to speed that up with the spacebar when I pop.
Thanks. Thank you. I will, I will do that. Just want to take, I want to show you the, this slide. This slide looks at kind of our border counties here, Polk, obviously St. Croix and Pierce. And the left-hand side of the screen talks about the rates, which is really what we are looking at in public health rates per, because it accounts for cases per 100,000 people. And public health people, we like to look at rates versus just case counts. The case counts is in red on the right-hand side of the screen. So just want to draw your attention to this. I also would like to draw your attention to on our St. Croix County website, we have a data dashboard that we try to get updated daily at 2:00 PM. So I hope you're all familiar with that. And this particular slide can actually be viewed. This is Wisconsin data and I'll talk a little bit about the differences between local and state data. But this is kind of what, big picture, what we're looking like right now in St. Croix County. What this says, these are cases per 100,000 people. So you can see in this area here, I don't know if you can see my cursor, in this Hudson area, your cases look, it isn't looking at just the 100,000. We are looking at cases in definitely higher numbers. I don't want this to be too confusing. We don't have 1,000 or 5,000 cases. This is really seeing this blue color. So we have like 100 to 100 cases per your, per your population. We'll speed that up. Now, this is a really interesting, we hired on a gal who's very smart with GIS mapping as well as, she's an epidemiologist. We typically don't have epidemiologists on staff, but because we have some limited term employee potential, we got ourselves a real smart epidemiologist to, who was able to plot some of this for us. Now, obviously, these are case counts. We're not looking at case rates again. But again, if you are interested, which I know you are, in the Hudson area, North Hudson area, you can see, we know there's more people in the Hudson area, but definitely, obviously, more concentration of COVID cases. And know that these were just, this isn't the full case count since we started. Oops, I went too fast. This was just in the last two weeks. The dates were on there. Gosh, is that gonna? Okay. So I gotta hide this little bar so I can look at this again. So we, we started really collecting our data right away in March when we had our first case, which came to us on March 13th. I know the date says March 15th, but so far, during this response, in the townships of North Hudson, or in the, I'm sorry, in the areas of North Hudson, Hudson and Hudson Township, since the beginning of the response, there has been 228 confirmed tests. Now, what that doesn't take into account are, if you remember in the beginning of the response, if you've been following this at all, testing was a big issue and testing kind of is an issue again now. But we weren't doing a ton of testing in the beginning of this response. So we had to use what we call probable cases. So what we defined as a probable case in public health was a household contact or someone who had close contact with an individual who had tested positive. So for a while, we had, we were seeing a lot more probables until testing, testing was increased and more accessible to people. And, and then when they were close contacts of a positive case, we would help them get tested as well. So one of the things that we look at as an indicator related to this pandemic is what we call percent positives. And I don't have this number articulated for you on this slide, but it's pretty easy to find your percent positive. You take the number of positives divided by the number of tests during a given time and you get like point six, seven, nine, you times that by 100 and gives you a percent positive of 6.79, I believe is the number. I had it written down, but of course, you know, I lost that already as I've, as, as we started this. One of the things about the percent positive number is what science and research and the people who are constantly studying this new disease for us are saying, you don't want a percent positive of over five in a given population. That is when you should definitely be careful and diligent and making sure that the whole community, because this isn't just a public health response. This is a response everywhere from emergency medical services to law enforcement to our hospital partners. We're all dealing with this pandemic, the community itself, the businesses, every, everybody is, has a part and a role during this pandemic. But, but one of the things we really want to make sure we are equipped for our, definitely our hospitals. So when our, when people are getting very sick, we have bed capacity for them and we have resources to take care of them. So just thought I'd. Spacebar. So here's an interesting slide that really looks at the number of positives by day. So it goes back all the way. There you go. I was right on the money with that first positive case back in March, March 13th. And then you can see, you know, we kind of crept along there as the weeks went by, just getting, you know, one, one, one. We saw kind of a little bit of an increase there in mid-May. And then after Labor Day, we started to see more, more cases and more positive, more positive tests come through. June, again, creeping up there into twos and threes and fours. And then right there before the 4th of July, we started really getting tapped with positive cases. I think it is really important for you guys to know what happens when public health gets a positive case. So we get the positive case reported to us through an electronic system that all clinics and hospitals and labs have access to. They import positive results to public health. Public health looks into that system every day and then we assign out the positive cases to our nursing staff. And then those nursing staff call the positive cases and do interviews with them. So if you hear in the national media, contact tracing, you hear about contact tracing, that is the lane of public health and that is what we are doing on a daily basis and have been doing since March. Now, you might think, I, I don't want these numbers to be deceiving because you might not think, oh, one case a day, you got probably four, five, six nurses dealing with this. That sometimes isn't always, it's, numbers just tell a part of the story. They don't tell the entire picture. What, what this doesn't tell you is the complexity of the cases, how many close contacts these cases have. Because once we identify close cases of a positive case, we call all of those people as well. And we are almost near 1,400 people who have been impacted in St. Croix County with a phone call from public health to let them know they've been identified as a close contact.
Hey, Kelly?
Yeah, you bet.
What, what point in time did the testing actually increase on that last slide?
Super question. So yep, that's a great, I can't go back. But I know from a previous presentation that we saw our testing really start to increase, mid-April, mid to end April. And I know that has been a question, well, are we, do we really have more positives or do we just have more testing? And I think that's a complicated answer. And I would likely say it depends and both, and both. Because the more, the more, the more testing you have available, obviously, you're going to identify more cases. But definitely a great question. Not the only thing we should be looking at, but definitely, did I answer that how to your?
Yeah, so you started seeing more positives as we started testing more. But it doesn't mean, that doesn't mean the cases weren't out there before. We just weren't testing as much. Is that an accurate statement?
Um, yes, I do believe that because this is, this is one of the complexities of this COVID pandemic, that yes, obviously, you test more, you're going to find more positives. But also, at the same time, there's variables of community spread happening. And we definitely know there is community spread within all of St. Croix County. I would say, you know, I can't give you numbers or, or indicators that would say how much community spread we have in St. Croix County. But that definitely is a variable that is saying it's spreading within our community, if that's, if that's fair. Age demographics, we've heard some really sad and terrible stories from other counties in our western region of our state. And our data is no different. The 21 to 30-year-olds is definitely the age group that's been most impacted. But also, you know, the, the 31 to 40, as well as 41 to 50, and even 51 to 60, those are our highest age groups that have been impacted. The reason that gives, keeps me up at night and gives me concern are these 21 to 30-year-olds. And I'll tell you why. There's a couple of reasons why I'm concerned. One, they're not getting very sick, which is great, and we're happy about that. But when they're not getting very sick, they're less likely to follow good infection practices, hand washing, social distancing, following the rules, so to speak, or the guidance that we give them, the voluntary order. We have all of our positive cases signed. We have had really good compliance. I will say I'm so happy, for the most part, St. Croix County community members, when they are impacted by this, they are cooperative, they listen, they ask great questions. And we feel that in public health, overall, this, this has been pretty smooth for us. I mean, we get, you know, hiccups there and, and we do get people who don't believe that this is not real or that this, this isn't real. And we have had some pushback, but overall, I am so thankful how, how this response has been going. Sorry, I'm jumping around a lot. I'm going back to my other points about my concern about the 21 to 30-year-olds. A lot of these guys and gals work at various jobs. So they're exposing more and more people. Some of this population also works with our very, our most vulnerable populations in long-term care facilities, assisted living, living facilities. And I, I do pray every night that we don't get into a situation like some of the eastern counties have in La Crosse County with workers who are potentially working at bars and restaurants. And then also during the day or night, going to work in our long-term care facilities. There have been deaths because, because of that, that very specific scenario of bringing COVID into a long-term care facility. And, and I don't mean to push blame on the 21 to 30-year-olds because I can't imagine myself, if, if I was 21, 22, 23 right now, going through this pandemic. I, my hearts go out to even our younger kids, our seniors, the, the new, the incoming class of seniors. School is gonna look, look pretty different, I think, this fall. And just so you guys are all aware, I do meet with school superintendents weekly. We have an 11 o'clock call on Monday mornings that we're, we give them any updates we have and then they have a chance to ask public health people questions. So, so those kinds of communications are happening within the school, the school settings. Any questions on this age, age group?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, all right, the age groups and stuff, now they're, they're testing positive, but are, how much are they being treated or is this more, you know, they don't, they show some symptoms, they don't show any symptoms? I mean, there's a lot of information out there about the, the, the testing and, and really how good is the testing?
Yep. So you've got a lot of questions in there and I'll try to address each of them. So, so first, let me address the asymptomatic. So when we say asymptomatic, we mean people who are testing positive and don't have very, they either have no symptoms or very mild symptoms. And that is happening. And there are national studies that say that is happening in up to a third to a quarter of people who have tested positive. I did run our numbers because I presented to, I believe it was either HHS Board or the Board of Supervisors, and they wanted to know, well, what is it for our county? And how, I was able to quickly run a report that night and haven't gone back to that report and really should to look at what is our asymptomatic positivity testing rates. At that time when I looked, and I bet that was, if it was the HHS Board, that's been almost three weeks. But if it was the Board of Supervisors, that would have been four weeks ago. And for St. Croix County, our asymptomatic positive test rate was right around 17%. So not as high as the national. But we definitely have people in St. Croix County asymptomatically testing positive. Test, quality of test, we're nerds here in public health and we talk about things in terms that the general, the general population doesn't have a ton of background on. We talk about test sensitivity and specificity. And those two terms really talk about, well, how reliable is that test? What are the chances that I am going to get a true positive or a true negative? And there's all these different kinds of tests too, right? So we have PCR testing, which has been the gold standard. And PCR testing stands for, I'll massacre this word, I apologize in advance, polymers chain reaction. I always say the P word wrong, so we'll just call it the P word. PCR testing is the gold standard and that is what most all of our labs and clinics in our area are using. But as we, I would say, within the last two to three weeks, we've seen a lot of different entities pop up to offer faster testing, quicker results. I caution, I, I'm not saying don't use them, but I just caution everybody who wants to get tested or needs to get tested to find out what kind of tests are these places that may not be your, your clinic, your, your primary care provider or your doctor's office. Just caution on what kind of tests are being used because, because there, we do know that there are tests out there there that aren't as specific or sensitive and could be giving us either false, false positive rates, higher false positive rates, or higher false negative rates, both, both ways.
Kelly, thank you for saying that. Honest, I mean, honestly, I mean, a lot of people don't understand that there's all kinds of predators out there after this stuff now. And I really appreciate it. Coming from the county, that's very, I much appreciate that. So thank you. And let's keep going. This is very interesting.
Oh, good, good. I did, I know this is public comment, so I feel bad. I'm taking all this time. Well, that's it. That's all I had. And that last slide was, that follows our St. Croix, sorry, it's a long day. Our St. Croix County data really reflects the national data that more males, slightly more males are testing positive over the female population. I don't know if I can go back to that. I don't know if I can go back to that screen. So um, this now was from the total beginning of our response. A hundred and six um, females have tested positive to 120 males, little slightly higher. Um, I do want to say we have had two unknowns, I guess, um, for whatever reason, uh, when that got inputted. Yeah, I know, for whatever reason that got inputted into our system. Um, you know, there's a very, there's a variety of reasons why that could have happened. We see this um, also in our race and ethnicity data, which I didn't put on this slide. Um, sometimes people don't want to answer questions. Um, like I said, overwhelmingly, we've gotten great response from the citizens of St. Croix County. Um, I'm not saying that these two unknowns uh, didn't want to give us their gender. Um, but it might be that, the rationale or the explanation on that.
Kelly, this is Lori Head, I really appreciate your time tonight. Um, what, I don't know if I missed the turnaround time currently on tests.
Yep, great question, you did not miss it. Um, and, and really, it, it, it just depends, um, it really depends. So I have anecdotal stories that um, one of our actual school leaders um, uh, said that they needed one of their staff members to get tested and they wouldn't have those test results back for 10 days.
That's, that's what I've encountered as well with a colleague, tested on the 27th of July, got a positive result today.
Yeah, um, what I can say about that is um, I actually am part of a statewide testing strategy group. Um, I felt um, compelled to be on this group, it's about 15 health officers from across the state with Wisconsin State Health Department folks trying to figure out testing goals for our state. And how do we um, have a statewide strategy that really looks at right number of, or not even right number, but number of tests, number of providers, number of labs that are willing to even run these tests. These, the testing issue has so many layers of complexity as well. Um, and what I'm telling people is I unfortunately don't have a better answer right now, but I think we're going to see that turnaround time ebb and flow as we continue through this response. Um, as more labs come on um, to run tests, um, I think we'll see that time shorten up. But then we'll get in situations where different outbreaks um, are occurring and everybody may be very, very backed up. Um, I will say that our clinic and hospital partners, um, oh, here goes the phone calls, sorry about that. Um, our clinic and lab partners um, not, they do not run their tests in-house, none of us in St. Croix County. Um, hospital and lab partners or clinic partners are running um, these tests in-house. They're either um, contracting back either to a larger health system in the cities that they are a part of or contracting with other labs um, to get the test results and people don't understand that eve- either. So that creates bottlenecks within the testing um, system.
Thank you, Kelly.
Stan, you're muted if you're speaking.
Chief. All right, any other questions for Kelly?
Kelly, is the PCR testing, I mean, I, I've been told that, you know, they could have gotten the virus and if you swabbed them too soon, that it doesn't show up in the mucus yet?
Such, such a great question and I'm currently dealing with a few different scenarios right now, actually even today. Um, that I said, hey, let's not jump the gun and test these folks too early, um, because I hate that absolutely. So I know a lot of, and I don't want to take a ton of your time, but I do want to explain this. So people are confused, not confused, we aren't doing a good enough job explaining about, well, you heard um, the person's got to be out 10 days, but then the doctor said 14 and I don't understand and this is also confusing. And what I will say, it is confusing and it has changed since March, it has changed several times since March. Um, so I want to clarify this for everybody. So if we have a positive test on a person, that person is required to be in self-isolation. And I'm going to give you a little trick on how I remember this. So we isolate, there's an S in isolate, sick and symptomatic people, okay? So that's the isolation piece. Now, anybody who has close contacts with that isolate, isolate, positive case, we quarantine them for 14 days.
Thank you.
We quarantine them for 14 days because of what we know now, we think it takes a body, a person's body up to 14 days to either one, start showing symptoms of COVID, or two, test positive. Most people are testing positive by day 12, um, but not all. And I also have, there goes the critters, um, I also have case, case studies that show um, right here, specific in our county, an exposure occurred, um, say, I don't know, June 30th, did not test positive until June 12th. So that was like almost day 14.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else? Kelly, I want to thank you very much for your uh, that was, I mean, very informative. Uh, I'm sure it's going to be very helpful for uh, our residents, I mean, you guys have got, have been following this. Uh, I thank you very much for what you've done, have you done and uh, you can uh, get in out of the way of the, um, the mosquitoes now and uh, we thank you.
Thank you.
Take care and keep us informed, okay?
Thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, any other items from the floor? Hearing none. Resolution 2020-06, requesting exemption from county library tax approval requested.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, is there a second?
Second.
I'll second it. Okay, uh, discussion. Hearing none, uh, let's see. I think we can go with this one, uh, all in favor of the uh, exemption from the, the county taxing, I'm just saying aye.
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 Opposed? We're okay with this, right, Melissa, chief? Vote wise?
Stan, this is the one we do, we do this, do we do this every year, Melissa?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, this is our annual one, it gives our three-year averages, the minimum we're required to pay. So that's our new three-year average on there.
Alrighty, thank you.
Okay, item five, 2020, 2021 class or parent class A slash class parent A alcohol beverage license. 4D Boys Inc., DBA Village Liquor Store Approval Requested. Motion please.
Uh, motion to approve class A fermented malt beverages in class A in tax-gating liquor license with an effective date of August 5, 2020 through June 30, 2021 for 4D Boys Inc., DBA Village Liquor Store, Roger Beavers Agent.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Brian, what was that, Tim?
Sorry, Stan, yeah.
Thank you. Is there any comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the uh, uh, alcohol approval requested, signal or saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Welcome to the new owners of the new Village Liquor Store, Roger and Fatsy Beavers and Brian and Sonia. Uh, uh, welcome to the village, hope you have a very successful business. Okay, item six, amended class B liquor license extended for premise. Village Inn Saturday, August 22, 2020, approval requested.
Can I just say so moved? Without reading all that, class A, class?
Brian, can you just add with uh, suggestions from the chief?
Yeah, there should be a suggested motion in the bottom.
No, I don't think there is, just, the chief listed some.
Oh, okay, yeah, all the criteria.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'd be a good idea.
All that, all that criteria is the same, right, chief, that we always do?
I don't think so.
I was trying to unmute myself, yeah, they are the same uh, conditions that are typically placed on an extended premise uh, request.
Okay. Do you want me to enter those? Or did I cover it by saying in whatever chief was requested?
No, write them out, read them out, we got time.
All right, uh, these items from the chief are, are required. Area, number one, area outside a building to be completely enclosed with secure fencing to be accessed only from near the main entrance area of the building. Use of alcohol shall remain within building or fenced in area. Item two, use of outside area only with specific permission of the village board for each particular date of event. Item number three, owner to provide equal amount of adjacent substitute off-street parking while parking lot areas fenced during that time, during time of event. Maintain the no parking alley between the village inn and Zappa Brothers or emergency vehicle and village public works traffic during the event. And item four, owner to be responsible for banned music volume and outside music to end no later than 10 p.m.
Thank you, Brian. Second.
Is there a second, Tim's a second.
Okay, any further discussion?
I, I was just wondering, maybe Mark, you might know the answer to this. Um, is, is there an occupancy guideline or limit within the fenced area based on the square footage? I noticed that Lee has the dimensions in there, which is great. And I was just wondering, is there a recommended um, occupancy for that area at all?
Unfortunately Lori, to be quite honest with you, I don't know the answer to that, that.
Okay.
Fire department or a fire code.
Yep.
But I, because it's outside, I'm not sure if that even applies specifically, I don't know if Paul knows.
I, I was thinking more of like, so like, is there room for people if they need to socially distance? If there's 200 people packed in there, it wouldn't be possible, I mean, they could just leave. But I was just wondering if there's any, if there was any talk about um, just counting heads a little bit to help manage that.
I know there was nothing in um, Mr. Alveson's request that discussed that and I, I specifically didn't ask him those questions, I apologize.
No problem, Mark, thank you.
Chief, do we know how his prior, his prior event went, uh, that we voted uh, um, about a couple of weeks back here on the special?
It was last Saturday.
Yes, do we know how that went? I didn't get any feedback, I was curious if anybody had any feedback from how that event went. I'm assuming it must have been.
On the 27th.
Correct.
I know that I had working that night, um, unfortunately went on vacation shortly after that, so I didn't get a chance to check in with him to find out if there were any issues, I can tell you that I didn't receive any complaints nor did I, uh, did we have any calls for service per se that were specific to that event.
It was a rainy day, it was pretty rainy, so I think that helped a little bit to keep people away. The weather was not so nice.
Yeah, I do know somebody tried to attend at about 9:30 and it was already closed down or the activity.
The weather.
Yeah, so, well, so it was anything, he was complying with the time, so.
Intervention.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on that? Going once? Going twice? Item seven, amended.
Stan, we still have to vote.
We still have to vote on Stan.
Oh, great, okay, well, then somebody should have said when I said anything else, I said we got to vote, you know? You gotta remind me of stuff, I'm old here. Uh, okay, so uh, all in favor of the uh, amended class B for Cozy Corner, I'm just saying aye and I'm sure Kirk is abstaining.
Uh, Village Inn, Stan, Cozy's next.
Village Inn, yeah, Village Inn, assume.
Okay, tell me which one we're voting on.
Village Inn.
Six, six.
All right, what are you going to say?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, now we're on to seven. Class B liquor license extended present for extended premises, Cozy Corner, Saturday, August 22. Is there a?
Uh, I move to approve with the chief, chief's recommend, five recommendations. Item one, area outside a building to be completely enclosed with fencing, extended premises access only from designated ID checking points or the establishment. Item two, use of alcohol shall remain within building or fenced in area per the establishment's liquor license. Item three, use of outside area only with specific permission of village board for requested date and times. Item four, owner to provide the equal amount of adjacent substitute off-street parking while parking lot is fenced during time of event. And item five, owner to be responsible for banned music volume and outside music to end no later than 10 p.m.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, further discussion?
I can answer any questions we have and then to kind of answer the question for the village inn. Uh, I can only speak for Cozy for right now and if it got to the point where we could look around and physically see people can't social distance, we definitely wouldn't let more people in. Uh, that's a decision that Meerron and Corey will make, but it's not a decision we'll take lightly and just if it does get that busy to just keep bringing people in, we definitely would say stop, we have to wait till some people leave. Uh, on top, on top, sorry, go on.
I, I really appreciate hearing that and I also appreciate in your diagram, the check IDs that you, you have designated.
Yep, and then on top of that too, we also have a company called Pro Three Solutions, I don't know if you've ever seen our videos, but they uh, been doing a lot of spraying around areas, so they're spraying the day before our event and the day after. So we have a company coming in to do extra work to make sure that it's all clean and everything.
Perfect.
Wow, wow, that's outstanding.
Careful, if you're also opening a larger area here, kind of the whole back area behind Cozy Inn. Uh, so it looks like there's enough social distance could possibly happen here?
Yes, absolutely, we have, I mean, space is definitely something we have there.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? And I'm sure we need a vote.
I will abstain from this vote, Stan.
I thank you, Kirk, uh, all in favor, signal or saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The guys win. Okay, item eight, amended class parent B slash class, parent class B liquor license for extended premises, Gov's Place, Saturday, August 22, 2020, approval requested.
Uh, Stan, I move to approve with the chief's recommendations of five items. Item one, area outside a building to be completely enclosed with fence and the extended premises access only from designated ID checking points or the establishment. Item two, use of alcohol shall remain within building or fenced in area per the establishment's liquor license. Item three, use of outside area only with specific permission of village board for requested date and times. Item four, owner to provide equal amount of adjacent substitute off-street parking while parking lot is fenced during time of event. Item five, owner to be responsible for banned music volume and outside music to end no later than 10 p.m.
Thank you, Brian, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Hey, Kirkie, that black, I was just looking for the first time, I didn't see the map earlier, that black dotted line, is that the entire area that you're covering?
Uh, yeah, the, there's a little middle part where there's a graph, not grass, uh, there's a little middle part that's going to hold other stuff, but yeah, that's going to be the whole area.
So you're covering, you're basically covering the liquor store and the, the car wash too?
Yep, and we've had permission from all of those people to uh, they know what's happening, we got the okay from them, as well as the Zappa Brothers.
Okay, well, that's a.
As well as Freedom Gas Station also knows, uh, yeah, Freedom, sorry, I was calling Tomfoam, Freedom knows that, uh, all of this.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent, it's certainly a big area, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Well, I'm hoping it's going to be fun and people pay attention, you know, I mean, it's a great cause, first of all, you know, I mean, helps the local businesses and helps the pepper. helps the local businesses and helps the Pepper Festival and stuff, so, uh, I'm hoping everybody comes out and enjoys it, you know? It's when it cut back into my comments, it's coming up. Uh, let's see, that would be a vote for, uh, Gov's Place. Now, are we at?
Yes.
And how are we gonna vote?
I'll abstain from this vote.
Okay, are all in favor of, uh, approving the, uh, amended class, uh, extended premise, signal is saying aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Opposed? Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is new business from the border staff, president's comments, uh, uh, as we've been talking about with the extended premises, uh, and, uh, what everyone looks forward to in, uh, August of this year is, uh, the North Hudson Pepper Festival. It's been a, you know, a very successful, uh, uh, event for the local community, raised a lot of good money for a lot of, uh, uh, nonprofits and a lot of people that needed. We built a school out of it when it first started out. That's the reason it started out. And, uh, this year, because of this, uh, uh, health issue, um, we, uh, are not having Pepper Festival, but the local businesses are going to have a, uh, uh, support the Pepper Festival and support local businesses events, which would have been on, on, uh, uh, Pepper Festival weekend. And I just wanted just a quick, these are really high point, uh, uh, items I got from the Pepper Festival Committee, and it said, uh, you know, please, uh, you know, Stan, remember in absence of Pepper Festival, local establishments are organizing a Can't Stop the Heat event. Please remember Pepper Festival is only participating in the event. They're not sponsoring the event, they're participating in the event. So high level plans are on Friday, twenty-one August, starting around five PM, the Malloo Bar and Stars Bar area will have a merchandise tent, they'll have games, they'll have the button raffle, and they'll have food specials. On Saturday, August twenty-second, when we usually have a parade, we can't have the parade this year. So, uh, at ten AM, Cozy Corner starts a bean bake tournament. And they'll have DJ music with that. At two PM, Gov's Place has a volleyball tournament starting. Uh, three PM, Gov's Place, live music. Six PM, Gov's Place, dart tournament. Seven PM, Village Inn, live music. Eight, nine-thirty in Village Inn, button announce winners. So, I mean, uh, whoever wins the, the button thing, I don't know if that's monetary, I'm not sure what the prizes are yet, but uh, I think it'll be a, a fun weekend, and I hope you'll come out and support them. Uh, they'll also have a merchandise tent uh, on the twenty-second throughout the entire day and a button raffle throughout the day. So I really hope that, uh, everyone will come out and help support the local businesses and support Pepper Festival because they're gonna be sharing revenues, I believe, how that's gonna go. Okay. Melissa, you got anything? Are there an election coming up?
Well, the election. My announcement's not as fun, but so the partisan primary election is next Tuesday, August eleventh. Polls will be open from seven AM to eight o'clock PM. In-person absentee voting ends this Friday, August seventh at five o'clock PM. The same safety precautions will be taken as was in the past two elections. So voters should be prepared to wait outside depending on, uh, in-person turnout. Absy voting is once again strongly encouraged. And the deadline to request an absentee ballot by mail is this Thursday, August sixth at five o'clock PM.
Thank you, Melissa. That's it? Okay. Let me see, the next on the agenda, agenda is Plan Commission, who did not meet. Uh, now we got Personnel and Finance Committee, recommendations, claims requested.
Uh, Stan, could I move to recommend the board to approve the August twenty-twenty non-reclaim, non-recurring claims of twenty-seven thousand five hundred and three dollars?
Thanks, Kirk. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Lori. Uh, I thought I was gonna have to dive in again, okay? Uh, all in favor, or no, wait, oh, this is claims, so we gotta go with, let's see, top of my screen, Kirk?
Um, yes.
Tim? Tim?
Tim, we can't hear you vote.
Tim?
One finger for us, two fingers.
Knock, knock.
Yes, sorry.
No problem. Uh, Brian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And, uh, I haven't heard if Kathy joined us yet. So, no, okay, uh, so, oh, and I voted yes. Okay, next on the, on the agenda is amend twenty-twenty budget approval requested.
And I so moved to amend the Village in North Hudson's twenty-twenty annual budget by transferring fifteen thousand from the public police department vehicle assigned fund and two thousand from the use of available funds to cover the purchase of a capital equipment for the police department.
Thank you, Tim. Is there a second?
I second.
Thanks, Lori. Is, is there a discussion? Crickets, all I can hear is crickets. Uh, hi Kathy, welcome.
Hi, I'm sorry.
But, okay, uh, let's see, uh, amend the budget, uh, let's go Lori.
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Kathy?
Sure, yeah.
You know exactly. Brian?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
And yes. Thank you. Okay, uh, next is a WPPA union contract. Announcement that the union negotiations are open. Uh, I believe that's all I have to do, chief, is to acknowledge that we will be in contact and they will contact us for a meeting. Chief?
Yeah.
Yep, trying to get back on the right screen again. Uh, yes, and then the second piece will just be to, uh, make the motion to put together a group or at least authorize that someone can start the negotiation.
Okay. All right, that'll be item two. So, uh, they are open and, uh, I'm guessing, let's see, village officials, negotiation, uh, Tim, are you gonna be able to be available?
Yes, certainly. So, Chief, the team, we have to make this a motion here on number two right now?
Just, just a motion to authorize village officials to negotiate.
Okay, so we don't have to vote or anything like that? No, no second or anything, Melissa?
No, it's just to set the committee, or just to set the group up and stuff, so, uh, uh, and Phil, you're on public safety too?
Yes.
And Kathy?
And Kathy. Uh, are you guys willing to serve on the committee to, uh?
Stan.
But, yes, dear.
For the police negotiations, it's you, um, the public
That's right.
Here.
Yeah, it's not us.
Me.
That's right.
Oh.
Nathan and the chief.
Oh, real, oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
That's correct. Okay.
Okay, never mind, I was trying to, you know, get a group of people together that would be, uh, well, more informed than me. But, uh,
So are we, so we're, this looks like a motion that we're authorizing village officials to negotiate.
Yes.
That's why I asked that, but.
Yes, if it, and that can basically be what the motion is, is kind of the wording. Just a motion to authorize village officials to negotiate. To enter negotiations, we're gonna start this, the conversation.
And I'll, and I'll second. Brian?
Okay, Brian and, uh, Tim. Motion is second. Uh, and that's, uh, all in favor. Signal is saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I, I guess I should add discussion. Anybody wanna discuss? Okay, all in favor of aye, it was good, we're covered. Um, Public Works?
Stan, Public Works did meet, um, we have nothing to bring forward. Uh, there is a public information meeting coming up from, um, the people that are what do you call those people exactly? Are they developers or are they?
They're a consulting firm, core?
Consult, a core, the core consulting firm is going to do their, their first public information meeting for the Wisconsin Street Project. Um, and that'll happen, that'll happen at our next Public Works meeting. And then, uh, we are hoping or we're working towards trying to do that particular Public Works meeting in a split fashion. Uh, open, in the boardroom and on Zoom at the same time if we can get the equipment and get it worked out.
Uh.
That's all I got.
Okay. Public Safety Committee, Tim, you got anything?
Stan, we did meet, but we have nothing to carry forward to the board.
Thank you. Okay. Welfare, Kirkie?
Uh, we did not meet.
Okay, how about Park Board?
Uh, we did meet, um. Uh, just to give a quick update from our last movie in the park, we had about, I would say forty-five to fifty people, so it was a good showing. People did a really good job of staying apart and then, um, yeah, it was really fun. So, um, with that being said, I'd like to move to extend the hours from eight AM to eleven PM at Pepper Fest Park on Wednesday, August twelfth and twenty-second, twenty twenty for movie in the park.
Second.
Thank you.
The, the motion says eleven-thirty, Kirk.
Oh, what did I say? Sorry.
Eleven.
Eleven-thirty. It gets darker faster, but eleven-thirty.
Any other move, corrections? Any, okay, hearing none, all in favor of signal is saying aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay.
I, I also have another thing, um, I would recommend to the board that we have Scott Electric install a ground lighting, uh, Chief Jensen Memorial Park to cost not to exceed one thousand five hundred dollars. The funds to be used from the assigned Chief Jensen Park account.
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a sec? Thank you, Brian.
And then this is just, uh, we've had, we tried solar for a while, it wasn't working, so we really need to get this light properly up there, so it's showing glory off.
Thank you, Kirk.
Kirk, did you say there's a, there's a actual fund for
Yeah, so, yep, we, when, we got, this is a while ago, uh, someone could help me on this, but we've had, uh, so, money set aside for that park. So for stuff like this, we're allowed to use that money for it.
Does it cover recurring costs?
No, that's gonna be put on us.
Okay. Cool, thanks.
Yep.
Go on, I, as I said in finance, I, I put three or four solar uh, devices to try to illuminate my flag in the front yard, and the reason I haven't flown it is because I can't run a wire out that far because solar don't work. Okay, all in favor, signal is saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, all right, sixteen, convening to close session. The board may convene in a close session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent little lowercase g for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the Village of North Hudson who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation regarding ADA compliant filed against the village. And this, do I have to do separate, uh, all?
You can combine them into one, we're just going into one closed session, so.
Okay, that's what I was gonna, you know, and the second part of the closed session then would be the board may convene in a closed session pursuant to statute nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent E, to deliver or negotiate purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified business where whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session with respect to Water and Sewer Committee updates. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move to go into closed session.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there a second?
I can.
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, we're back in, uh, open session for the village board meeting and, uh, coming out of closed session and there was no actionable items, so at, uh, eight fifty-four, we would be adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for, uh, sticking with us and, uh, uh, we will see everyone the next time. God bless and have a great week.
Yep, you too.